I'm disappointed that nobody wanted to know what I've been getting up to. Very proud to unveil the new defibrillator on Admiral's Estate and well done to the Norwich Road Residents' Association for all their works. I even got to practise my German in a constructive manner at the Thetford Dolphins Links Gala. Obviously, most of November, the start of November was taken up with our Armistice Remembrance and over at East Retham. And then I had the privilege to continue the winning theme and attend the Mayor of Haverhill and Haverhill Twins Towns Association, St Andrews and Christmas Dinner Dance. And then slightly belatedly, unfortunately due to Covid, I finally did the formal reopening of the new Hughes shop, which was great. Should be mindful that, I appreciate it was a contentious issue with a firm relocating from our town centre up onto the retail park. They've increased the number of jobs there. We shouldn't forget that actually Hughes have three other sites in Thetford in terms of warehouse, distribution and customer service, and they employ over 150 people in the town. So to continue getting that investment is actually really good at a time when retail is struggling and their click and collect has gone up over 300%. So enjoy and thank you to councillor Wright for attending the Mayor of Deirum's civic service whilst I was away on business and doing the mayoral talk for the Swedish visitors. Thank you. Yes, please.
I also represented the mayor at Thelma Payne's funeral service, which we had a number of ex-mayors there and the family were grateful of that presence that those attended.
As is customary as it comes to this time of year, a few reminders for you all as well. The Christmas light switch on is this Friday. The mayor's carol service is next Friday, seven o'clock at St Cuthbert's and all are welcome, including members of the public. And then just a couple of dates for your diary. The mayoral fundraising quiz night will be held on the 10th of February. I'm frantically writing quiz questions and if you're really unlucky, I'm going to be quiz master. And the mayor's ball is scheduled for the 28th of April. So are there any questions on the mayoral adventures? No, thank you. In that case, we will move on to 50822, which is Town Council Representatives on Other Bodies. I'm going to just go around the table, I think, and please do indicate to me if you'd like to speak, Terry.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to update the council on the closing of the Charles Ball for the Christmas, the winter season and would like to thank-
Museum.
What did I say?
I guess I said Charles.
Well, yeah, because that's what I called it, Charles Ball Museum. But they will be open this Friday, ready for the light switch on, on the evenings for the Steam Engine Cafe, I think they call it. Yeah, so they can get some passing trade there and they will open the cafe occasionally, but the main museum will be closed. I'd like to thank the councillors that attended their closing day. I think they had a good time, didn't they? And the little engines that went up the market, although nobody knew that they was going up there, they just went up there and I think the members of the public actually absolutely loved it. And thank you to councillor Hollis, who, as she goes around collecting stuff, she donated a lot of alcohol for the Alcohol Tom Bola, like she does, but it really helps in a, with a small museum to actually, you know, get these little bits given to them. But yeah, so thank you once again.
Councillor Hollis.
It is and it's not, if you know what I mean. So please bear with me, Madam Mayor. Over the last few months, myself and Brent have been working to give these 30 children a Christmas, a Christmas. The children being nominated by schools. So we've been doing our collecting as we do. We've raised £75 for 30 children to go to the Guildhall to see Santa on the 4th and I'd like to thank the office staff and our management team for the help with the tickets. We've also raised money, it's five to seven year olds and we're going to have a Christmas party for them over at the Abbey Centre. So we've got 30 giant Christmas sacks with presents and not just toys and sweeties and things, they've got learning stuff. We've managed, we've raised enough to get 30 of the spelling sound flashcards and we've got them from an educational place that deal with schools and that, so we know we've got the right ones, hopefully. Yeah, but Troxys have been generous to give us, donate to us, over £100 in colouring books, art pads, colouring pencils and they're going to wrap them, which is really good. We've had donations from Tesco, Location Locations, Children's Team donate us bags. They collected, didn't give us money because we weren't asking just, you know, for money. We were asking for things as well. And the Children's Team at Thetford Office gave us four big bags of things. So what was going to start off with one present and a Christmas party is now ending up with some sacks. We had a kind donation from councillor Crawford, Pearson's Charity, Seacoal Limited, other charities, residents donations, the double had their name put out there. Got discount sweets because we've got to send every child home with a carrier bag, hopefully some people to donate 30 nice carrier bags. We've got 30 tubs of Heroes at Celebration, so they've got a choice and 30 packs of chocolate biscuits, finger biscuits and they have some fruit in there and so, yeah. So that's what we've been doing on the side for the last few months.
Thank you. Thank you. And I was rather indulgent in letting you speak because it is Representatives on Other Bodies.
It could be past that being as it's done from the Friends of, Friends of GWS.
Which is a completely separate entity.
It is.
For Town Council.
I always think it's not political speech, it was something that the town council-
I value the joy and the positivity. Let's remain in that vein.
That's it.
Councillor Baretto.
Some people want other voice per se, just a quick note to officially send condolences to the family of Sean from the River Group that passed away recently. He was a regular presence attending here at our meetings and he's done an amount, a huge amount of work in the river, volunteering hours to keep the river in Thetford clean. So I'm just trying to send my condolences over to the residents of the town, to the River Group and to his family directly. Thank you.
I suppose it's going to be an anticlimax after the excitement.
This is a positive one, isn't it?
It is positive. I attended on your behalf the GTP meeting, the sixth. We, among the major things we talked about were healthcare provision, station enhancement, the A11 junctions and progress on King's Street.
You'll never catch on making these declarations in a public meeting, councillor. Councillor Tullott.
Yeah, just following on from councillor Hodgson's point on GTP, they did discuss the A11 junctions. I was a little concerned that it seemed to be the junction improvements or not always an improvement in some respects of potentially closing Croxton Road access to the A11, which would mean the whole of the Croxton Road area having to utilise the Munford Road, Croxton Road junction if that ever came to pass. So hopefully they took away from that meeting our concerns in respect and also some of the improvements not embracing walking and cycling initiatives, which we, you know, keep banging on about. And I think Norfolk were represented there and we tried to and let them know that you do have to look at the local road network as well because we have a one arterial road going through the town. The town is bisected by rivers, so we've got effectively two crossing points of the river. Whatever you do with the bypass access is you're going to impact upon the network. And so hopefully they've taken that away to make sure that is looked at again. But there's nothing imminent happening, but obviously if you don't get in early on these matters, you don't have a chance to influence them.
Any questions on those feedbacks, please? In that case, we will move on to reports from county and district councillors. Councillor Harvey.
I've got this one typed, so I'll be able to read it. This is, I've attended cabinet in Swarthby with Breckland on Monday the other week, dying goes so fast. As a Thetford member, I'm pleased to speak in support of the Thetford Livy Plan, not in total. There's a lot in there and frankly, frankly, it's unlikely we'd all agree to everything, but it's a good overall assessment and the need and opportunities to be considered as asked. The one point I did want to make, however, is that while I can understand the council's need to look ahead, we must have the big picture in mind. We absolutely cannot overlook the here and now. Some of the biggest problems do not require expensive and complicated solutions. I walk around Thetford a lot, I talk to residents, they're not always happy, but I do it anyway, visitors, tourists, and I complete regular litter picks. What we see all too often and the visitor sees blocked drains, dirty road signs, street furniture covered in graffiti, simple things that make a big difference and recommend me to pay far greater attention to these issues. There is also very little mention of existing residential communities like the ones I represent. There's a huge need for regeneration and improvements and I'd like to see Breckland playing a major role in that.
Thank you councillor Harvey. Are there any questions on councillor Harvey's report, please? In that case, I'll move on to councillor Brindle. Is there anything you'd like to report? Councillor Brain? Councillor Jeremy? I know you've always got stuff.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'm just really out of interest really. Firstly, on county, I, one of the committees I sit on at county is the Audit Committee, which reviews financial policies and procedures, really quite sort of heavy weather finance and scrutiny stuff. You'd love it on Audit, Jay. I do have to concentrate to keep up, to be honest with you, because it is pretty confusing stuff. But one of their roles is to look at fraud and they oversee the work of trading standards and they do this fraud team that exists at County Hall and does an awful lot of work behind the scenes on scams and phishing attempts. And, you know, we all get these emails and text messages now and everything else with people trying to defraud people's money and everything like that. And they do a very good job at county on fraud prevention. It still happens, but there is a lot of work that goes on. And one of the things I press them on is that the people who I come into contact who are particularly vulnerable to fraud are those people that don't regularly or routinely use the internet, don't regularly use online shopping or online banking, because when they receive a text message or an email, they're not as familiar with it and they can often, you know, click and input data that they shouldn't be. The problem is, like most councils, Norfolk these days pushes out an awful lot of information online, whether it be social media or the website. So I made a plea that they actually have a real hard look at how they communicate with people who aren't online, who aren't using social media, aren't using email, because those people actually, I think, get missed in council communications and therefore aren't as aware of what the potential risks and scams are. And they did take it away and they will be looking at what they can do in terms of fraud prevention for people that aren't as familiar with computers basically and digital access. At Breckland, I've been in quite a bit of work the last few weeks around fuel poverty and credit unions. We're all aware of the cost of living crisis and the Breckland Household Support Fund is still there. I've nominated several residents and vast majority seem to be successful, up to £300 to support gas, electric or food costs. It's a very worthwhile scheme, so if you are aware of anyone that is struggling, do get them to talk to your Breckland councillors because there is actually, you know, some quite significant support available. As with everything in life, you need to know that it's there in order to ask for it. So getting the word out there is absolutely key. And then lastly, I've been complaining at both the scrutiny committee and at the Breckland Cabinet Meeting about disabled facilities grants. Breckland administer a pot of money from the government to enable adaptations to be made to people's homes, whether that's installing a wet room or a stair lift or a handrail. Unfortunately, the entire year's budget for those adaptations was spent by the summer this financial year. So there's a backlog now of about 500 people in Breckland either waiting for an assessment or have had an assessment, but there's no money to implement the handrail or the stair lift or the like. And if you consider the pressures that we have on the health service, whether that's the NHS or with care homes, we need to be addressing that blockage so that we enable more people to live at home independently with adaptations to enable them to live at home. And, you know, it's very frustrating that there was a blockage in the adaptations grants process and it's not a political issue. We all, we all recognise that there's an issue and the officers recognise there's an issue. But the budget next year looks likely to be the same as this year, but by the time we get to the 1st of April, we have already had several hundred people this financial year. So next year they won't be able to cope either. So I think it's important that we raise these type of issues so that the blockages can be identified and the budget made available. For every one pound of disabled facilities grant expenditure, it's worth seven pounds to health service in terms of preventing access to the health service or, you know, stopping unnecessary access. That's it. Thank you.
Councillor Crawford.
Just two things on Terry's report, very comprehensive as usual. One, the disability grant that Breckland controls, is that instead of the county one what they used to have, it used to be in the control of the county, they used to have the disability grants. Are they mutually?
I think how it works and I don't know what, how it used to be, but how it works now, this is classic local government, because the money comes from the government, it goes to county and county give it to the districts to spend.
So it has changed.
So it may have been previously administered by county direct, but now it's actually spent by the districts, but it comes a long way to get there.
And two, it's good for you to report on the, everything kind of be done on computers and all that stuff, but can you ask Breckland not to do the same thing that the county's doing, please? Yes, because Breckland's doing the same thing.
Councillor Land, welcome from Breckland District Council. Is there anything you'd like to report this evening, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things, well, four actually. Like councillor Jeremy, I've been writing out council support fund, £300 tickets. We're getting more and more people coming to the community shop where I work at Charles Ball Centre, or where I volunteer, I should say, at the Charles Ball Centre. It feels like we're in crisis a little bit, so I hope that's been helpful for people. I've been speaking with Flagship and got a team around on Monday tidying up the garages around the ladies estate. So I haven't had a chance to have a look and see what they've done yet, but we'll do with due force. I promise this is the last time I'll mention it, but councillor colleagues and myself have raised over £1,000 for a slow cooker challenge. We've bought 50 cookers along with recipe books and, and a piece about how to join a course to use them. It said that a slow cooker could save a family £300 a year, meaning that it's feasible that we could have saved residents up to £15,000. So I think that's a very worthwhile cause and thank you for everyone who's contributed. I also was at the Cabinet Roadshow at Swarthby and asked a question regarding, there is a £20,000 council tax rebate, not, not for each person, but in totality.
Nice.
Available for people struggling with paying council tax. It was unclear really how that was being administered, so I asked a question about that and got a satisfactory answer. In addition, beyond that, I had a promise from the, from the cabinet chair that he would come or his representatives would come to the community shop, as I mentioned earlier, and, and go through it with us so that we can use it and deliver it and it becomes a good thing too, which was a really positive result. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Local council tax reduction scheme, I think you were talking about.
Yes, I was. Yeah. Apologies.
That's all right. It just helps not to, yeah, say it in total so people can find it. Thank you ever so much. Are there any questions for councillor Land, please? I'm mindful that I am also a Breckland and county councillor. Does this council wish me to report on my activities like that? I've been mindful of not doing it, but also mindful that normally you would do-
So if you've got something to report that we've not heard, then yes, please. If it's something different.
So this, the local plan update, I think what's probably most important for us as town councillors is on the 20th of December at four o'clock over at Elizabeth House at Deirum, Breckland are holding a parish and town councillor session where they'll deal with some of the issues and the options paper that's coming out of that. And it will give us as a town council the opportunity to feed back on that options and issues paper, which I think is really, really important, especially with, you know, the planning committee in mind. To support our residents, Norfolk Community Foundation have opened a second round of community hotspot funding as they've received some further funding and applications sadly are online, but the deadline for that is the 12th of December, but that's the standard Norfolk Community Foundation process. With my county councillor hat, I appreciate completely what you're saying in terms of the electronic side of things, but as Equalities Champion on Norfolk County Council, I've this last week been having discussions with the team about accessibility and how ensuring, you know, they work for those who have visual challenges, hearing challenges and some of the work that's going on in that way. So it is accessible to all as it possibly can be. And then just finally, which I think is a really important thing for our families, is the cost of living vouchers. So families eligible for free school meals now receive a monthly cost of living voucher. The vouchers will be £15 per month per child with an additional payment of £30 per child in December. These vouchers are provided by Eden Red and could be used in all supermarkets for essentials, including clothing. What I'd say is this, if councillor, if you could let myself or councillor Jeremy know if there are many families out there that you think should be getting them and we need to help them and they're not getting them, let us know so that we can start pressing those buttons for them. And that's it. Thank you. Councillor Cannon.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot the arms out, as everybody keeps mentioning about the fuel. The Arms Houses met the other week, last Tuesday, and we agreed that from our poor charity, that would once again go into the Food Bank where they will give out fuel tickets. So there's another area if somebody is desperate for fuel.
That's the food, the hub.
The hub, yeah.
Councillor Crawford.
Just a suggestion really, that Breckland brings its phone number up from deep within the webs, up into the front page. I've been suggesting that since I used to be a district councillor and it's still hidden the way. You can find it if you dig, but you have to dig deep. Thank you.
Portfolio holder duly noted. Thank you very much for the suggestion. Councillor Baretto.
The date of the meeting on, like, construction 2020.
20th of December, at four o'clock.
Four o'clock. I think I have sent out an email about it to everybody.
Hopefully. Councillor McDonald.
I've got a question on communications that you were talking about. And this is actually communications from county or, or district on our 30th at Thetford. We've had nothing back about it. It was going to be done in November. It was going to be done much before that and now we're here, but another town in Norfolk is going to do a trial 20 mile an hour limit. What's wrong with Thetford?
Because you didn't work hard, did you?
Well, it's it.
Now I'm going to do it.
It didn't work hard.
You can imagine my frustration, and I think councillor Jeremy shared it, when we both saw that headline in the EDP, which has resulted in probably also the same response from councillor Jeremy of an email being fired across to our highways engineer saying, what's happening? We await their response. And I should also have a walkabout shortly with the said highways engineer, so perhaps we'll set up an ambush. Sorry, but I think it would be appropriate to challenge where we are on that. Councillor Jeremy, is there anything you'd like to add on that subject?
No, just completely agree, Madam Mayor, and share your frustrations.
Asking a money bank.
It was your money.
I know.
Oh, I asked for always money back.
Okay. I think we've given that particular agenda item a good threshing. So 5:10, councillor Ken Parker leave of absence. So this agenda item is to consider a leave of absence request until the spring for councillor Ken Parker due to medical issues and upcoming surgery. As he hasn't, he hasn't attended for a couple of meetings, he is not at the point where he is not attending for six months, but this council can choose to grant an extended leave of absence on that basis. I know he's been quite active on email and phone calls, if my phone and email is anything to go by. So he is in contact with residents, he is fulfilling where possible, he is just physically unable to attend these meetings at this point in time due to those medical issues and upcoming surgery. Councillor Cannon.
I will agree that we extend his term of absence because I know if he's waiting for surgery and everything like this, everything he does, you know, if you're going to the hospital tomorrow, well, isolate the week before, you know, especially when it's surgery and that's all you get all the time, isolate, isolate, isolate. So I can't blame him.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crawford.
On the, I have sympathy with him not being health, very healthy and everything, but are we giving a defined period of absence or are we just saying an indefinite period of absence? And so he can be absent till May, say, when we have the elections? You know, this is a question.
So the agenda item is until the spring?
Which is.
Which I normally suggest starts at the start of March.
March, April, isn't it?
It depends on his recovery because it's ability.
The clarification matters. Can we set an end to it or do we just have an indefinite till May, say, when we have elections anyway, so?
If you want to set an end to it, set an end to it.
Well, it's not good for me, I'm just suggesting.
The gift is within this council proposal and if you would like to put that caveat on it, that is within the gift of the council. So we're in your hands. Councillor Hollis.
I support it. As Brent said, you can wait for surgery and that.
Okay.
Isolate.
I agree to giving councillor Parker a-
Councillor Brain and councillor McDonald, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't realise we'd gone below the line, so I will carry on standing up. As a fellow council ward member, I know he's been struggling, but as you so rightly say, he has been doing quite a lot on email and I've been very pleased with the number of people who he has put me in touch with. And then when I phoned him up and said, well, why didn't you phone me in the first place? Surely I've thought of that. I thought he was too posh, he was a district councillor. And I think that happens a lot, that the town people don't actually think that the district people, you know, will want to listen. And they have been going through him as a town councillor and he has been pushing them my way and things have been done. To be honest, purely simply, if I'm really honest and you take it on a financial then, I think we really ought to do it because this town cannot afford a by-election, you know, just before April. I mean, it would be absolutely crazy. Yes, he is doing stuff, he is working and I would ask this council to say, yeah, you know, let's just let it carry on and as I say, the other council ward members will know that, you know, he is being active and we will keep an eye. Thank you.
Councillor McDonald, please.
Madam Mayor, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I see little point in going against it. They've-
it. They've, for the grace of God, go I. It could be any one of us. And as we rightly said, with this election in May, why try and put a shorter date on it? Let's help the chap out where we can.
And while we're talking, and she's gonna want it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I think we have to believe in when people's, the serious health issues, health comes first than anything. So we wish him a speedy recovery for his operation or not. I think when it comes to the council meetings, we are close to election. This is about half a year. If we give it half a year to councillor Parker to be away, it's gonna pretty much hit a deadline where people should be looking to be re-elected or not, whatever the situation may be. And I think should impose a timeline, but just because you don't know about this six things. And obviously, if we didn't accept the leave of absence, what's gonna happen is gonna be putting in apologies. So it's gonna be a repetitive thing because we are not likely to replace any councillor from here until the election because it doesn't make sense for only for six months only. So might as well accept it and hope for that he recovers as quickly as possible to join us again.
So the vibes that I'm getting from the table is that we're in support of this. So therefore, I propose that we do grant a leave of absence to councillor Ken Parker. Can I have a second, please? I'm overwhelmed. Pick one.
I'll do it.
Dennis has been the most persistent.
All those in favour, please? That was unanimous. Thank you all very much, team. We then go on to use of the seal. Oh, this is you. You're gonna have to speak up. Need to inform the council on use of the council seal.
Right. And sounding like a seal, but myself has the impression of the council seal. We used the seal on three changes for the paperwork to go with the new leases for the shambles. So it was like the, you've got it now.
I've got it. Shall I read it? Let's save your voice.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the, on the following legal documents, it was used counterpart seal, counterpart lease, rent deposit deed and licence for alterations. So that's for us all to note. Super. So 512 has been dealt with already. We then move on to 51322, which is the review of the operational budget for 2023-24. You've all had it. You've all read it. You've all contributed to it. I'll open the floor for discussion. If there's no one wishing to speak, then I will move to the motion. Thank you, councillor Jeremy.
Well done, Terry.
I don't know if you like what I've got to say. I have gone through the papers, and frankly, they're scary. I can't in in good conscience vote for a 30 something percent increase in council tax. Not when we're in a cost of living crisis and all the things that we've been hearing about. However, I don't believe I should just sit back and vote against without offering an alternative. So I would like to propose an amendment. It may be that fellow councillors support that, maybe they don't. And then I can decide if I vote for or against the budget after that amendment. Probably against if it's not amendment because I don't like it in its current form. In my own head, I think a 10% increase in the town council share of council tax would be justifiable. We have inflation running around 10%. And I think there is a strong argument to say the council is victim of inflation, just the same as everybody else is. So a 10% increase in council tax would seem sensible. If we were to do that, that would leave a gap of £150,000, well, £15620, which would need to be found from that budget to achieve a balanced budget. And I've got two proposals to put to you. The first is around the shambles and empty property. The current assumption in the budget is that the two currently empty units in the shambles and the former art gallery, the assumption is that they will stay empty for the whole of the next financial year. What that does is means that we don't get the rent from those free properties. So we lose the income. But what they also mean is that we, as a council, pick up the business rate liability for them. So so I'm going to suggest that we obtain a more optimistic return for the free vacant units on the market base, which would save us the business rates of £16,600, which if they remain empty for the whole year, we would have to pay out £16,600. So if they were occupied, even if they were occupied by a small business or a local charity, who would get business rate support, that saving for us would be materialised. And I'd like us to assume that we achieve occupancy of six months as a worst case scenario. I think we could be optimistic and have six months of occupancy, or six months at the full rate or 50% of what we could charge. So essentially, we're saying that we'll reduce the amount to rent here just to get them in frankly. So that would save £16,600 on business rates and additional income of £8,300 from those property issues. That still leaves us £125,720 to be found. And I don't mind doing it. And I'm quite sure the chair is gonna have a heart attack in a moment. The second part of the proposal is to save that £125,720 is that rather than transferring in the next financial year £137,500 to reserves, we are proposing to increase our amount of reserves to the tune of £137,500 in the next financial year. We would actually only transfer £11,780, on the proviso that if any additional savings are identified during the year, that they be transferred to reserves. And there's some quite significant increases factored in for rates and utilities. If they don't go up by as much as we fear, and Adam's job is to be as pessimistic as possible, that's a finance person's job. I completely respect that, worst case scenario. But they might not go up by the amounts that have been budgeted for. That would give us the money which we could then transfer to reserves, recognising that the original intention was to beef them up. Some of you may not like that. That's just a shooting from the hip from me. But if that was approved, we would be putting our share of the council tax up by 10%. And therefore, I could support the budget, which I don't feel comfortable doing at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeremy. I've got councillor Crawford and councillor Cannon, please.
I like some of the ideas. Again, I balk at having such a big increase of council tax and everything. But I do have one thing is you included the old the old art gallery. Is that building still usable?
Not until we've resolved the clock tower issue.
Yes, it could be a considerable time before that gets done and everything. So with that proviso, I would have to say I support everything Terry says, but I don't think that's a practical thing to put that into it at this moment.
Councillor Cannon, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, could the finance officer, just off the top of his head, tell us what the impact is if we stop putting in reserves? Because obviously, not putting into reserves, but you know, we could do this every year for the next five years, but this is exactly in trouble. So I'd just like to know what the impact would be if we didn't put this money into reserve.
Pick this up if you like. So the proposal in the budget to transfer into reserves consists of £65,000 to go into the property repairs, £12,500 into office equipment, £15,000 into St Peter's, £5,000 into election costs and £40,000 into play park renewal. Were this council minded to explore councillor Jeremy's proposal, those would have to go back to those relevant committees before coming back to this council for a decision. I am mindful that the committees have put together their spending plans, what they need to do, their projects, and this is the consolidated picture. And I was at great lengths to say, this is a consolidated picture of this council's needs and aspirations. If this changes, your committees need to change your aspirations and your plans. So that's just my caveat. One thing that I would specifically pick up on is the election costs, at the risk of sounding awful, is kind of a no-go touch. So that will leave you six, seven, eight, six to put somewhere. Mindful that we've had discussions regarding St Peter's, our property repairs. We've just had the conversation alluded to there in terms of repairs to the guildhall to enable said facility to be utilised. It kind of ends up being Robin Peter to pay Paul because we don't have the reserves, but then we have to have the reserves to do the works. But then we don't have the reserves because we haven't put it into it. So it becomes a very frustrating position, I imagine, for those committees to make those really difficult decisions. The other side of things I would highlight in terms of councillor Jeremy's proposal is, given the economic climate that we've just highlighted, do we think it's reasonable that we can rent those units out? And that is a question. It's not a statement. It's just a question and something to consider. So councillor Brindle, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think we're in a really different position here. We, I'm one of those who tends to want to do this council to be an active council and to do things. And it costs money to do things. And I hate the idea of cutting back on what the committees have proposed. But I must admit, 30% plus rise in in council tax is pretty astonishing at a time when we've been just ourselves talking about food banks and the assumption that, oh, well, those people aren't paying council tax. Everybody's suffering from the pinch unless they're pretty well off. Everybody's cutting back. And I just find it hard to justify spending that kind of an extra amount of money at a time like that. I think there's another issue about the consolidation used that word, Madam Mayor, of the committee's work. And that is that each committee works to a degree at least in a silo. They don't see what the other committees are deciding. One committee might say, well, we need to put ours up, but we're hoping the others aren't going to. But obviously, what turned out this time was that several others did think the same thing. Our committee used to have our money, but we're hoping the others won't want to. And we've been caught out. So I would support this. As regards reducing the amount of money being put into reserves, reserves are always said to be for a rainy day. A rainy day. And you know, rainy days never seem to come. Covid, inflation, a decline in living standards. It's pretty wet out there. I think we should be saying, we'll put a tiny amount into, but we recognise the importance of maintaining a decent sum of money in the bank. But we really have got to look after our paying customers now and cut down from 30 or 30 plus percent rise. It's an astonishing total to be asking people to pay at this moment. I know there's a danger that Norfolk may be asking for more. On the other hand, the same people have got to pay both.
Councillor Brindle, 10 o'clock.
And just to say, on the rentals, we do actually have another tenant, is it in two, three they're looking at? So another one of these should be taken within the next months, hopefully. And I think there has been some interest in the other one as well, but it hasn't actually sort of materialised in regard to anything yet because I think they're gonna wait till after Christmas and then come back and talk to us again.
Councillor Brain, please.
Madam Mayor. Looking at these figures, yeah. Terry has come up with a a solution, but it's taking it all from one place. It's saying, you know, we, as Mike said, you know, it's a rainy day. We've got to use the reserves.
Yeah, I can go with some. Not put more into reserves.
I can use not putting as much, but we need to keep those reserves going. We need to look at this in the round. The committees have had some really marvellous aspirations. You know, I will argue all of the time, one little tang grand, that we built a path which, you know, that people could walk on the bloody grass and had been doing it for 40 years. Never complained. But we decided as an aspiration of a council to tarmac it. Those sort of things that we're doing now, we've got to start looking at as a council and say, we get this money from the people who live here. You know, let's look at how we're spending it as much as anything else. The toilets. Yes, it's great that we have public toilets. Should we be now looking at a small charge to use public toilets? The toilets at the bus station. Why are we looking to fund them and look after them? They're not even ours. They belong to Norfolk County Council. So isn't it about time we said to Norfolk County Council, you look after them or we shut them? Because the majority of the townsfolk don't use them. It's the people that get off the buses. And most of the people that get off the bus go in the loo and they get back on the bus. Because they've gone to Norwich, or they've come from Norwich and they've gone to London. So why are we, as a small town, trying to look after a complete set of toilets, which we know cost us a fortune? And we don't even, you know, they're not ours. So let's look at our aspirations. Let's look at our project and be a little bit more, hang on a minute. There's people in this town choosing between eating and heating. We ain't even looking at how we can save money on our projects. We're not even going back and saying, you know, this is our times. We need to run this town and we need to have a fiscal policy that actually works. You can't just keep spending it and say, no, I don't put any reserves. They don't matter. Because guess what? The reserve that's gonna keep that guildhall standing up is gonna have fortunes in it. And that's gonna cost a lot more than fortunes on any max funding. So I think rather than having all of these personal projects that we want to put out there to say, oh, ain't we good? Look what we've done. We've saved your shoes getting wet. People can't afford shoes. So let's look at our projects and be a damn sight meaner on the projects and say, right. Every thousand pounds that we can cut on projects, then we'll look at cutting some of what we put in the reserves. But not, don't put nothing in the reserves for the future because we want to look good and spend it now. I can't agree with that. So we've got to look at the projects as well.
Thank you, councillor Brain. Before I come to you, councillor Jeremy, I am mindful that we are coming up to nine o'clock. And I would like to propose that we actually suspend standing order 3W, which states that a meeting shall not exceed a period of two hours. Do I have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Crawford. Of course. Do you want to hang around for the vote two moments? Because actually, it's not agreed that we're gonna go on. So all those in favour of suspending that particular standing order? Super. That's unanimous. Well done. Councillor Jeremy.
Yeah, just a couple of points in response to Roy. I think it's a really important point that we are not proposing, or I'm not proposing, to take money from reserves. We are proposing to top up reserves even more. Now, in the papers that we had circulated, I didn't have a reserve statement. I don't know what's in our reserves at the moment. But I would imagine, you know, they have been growing over the last few years. And there is a significant, I think there's significant, other people might not agree, but there is money in reserves. Despite all of these issues, we're not proposing, I'm not proposing to take from reserves. I'm proposing that we don't top up reserves further. we're not proposing, I'm not proposing to take from reserves. I'm proposing that we don't top up reserves further for the reasons that Mike just said. Uh, buses, um, uh, I'm off to London on Thursday, Roy, and I'll be using National Express. And I'll make a point of using the loo just to get good value on them. The buses that go between London and uh Norwich, if it's a National Express or the like, they have toilets on board. The vast majority of the bigger bus companies have toilets on board. And if you uh need to go, you do use them. I'm not saying everybody um from Fettford uses them solely. I'm sure there's some people from outside, heaven forbid that they they use the loo. Um, but the vast majority of people that use the bus station toilets and people from Fettford using the town Nipper Bus or or T one, T two, those sort of services. Um, and uh, you know, they they get uh good use. Because frankly, you know, we want to encourage people to use the local bus services and having a toilet is actually really important. The pathway that you mentioned, for the ten thousand pounds that the town council put into the Blade and Bridge pathway, uh, we had a fifty thousand pound half delivered. If the council was more savvy on its return on investment for projects like that, uh, we wouldn't be in such a pickle. Uh, a pound from us gets five pound or four pound elsewhere, I think is really good value actually, and we should be focused on that. Um, this isn't a budget about, this isn't a budget about projects and activities. Um, we have seen uh next year's budget an increase in salary costs of a hundred and forty-one thousand pounds compared to this year. Some of that is increased cost for each staff member, some of it is because there's additional staff. Sixty-seven percent of this budget is for staff. We should be having a much wider look as a council about what we're getting for that money and productivity and value for money. Because there is very little money available now for projects or anything else. Uh, technically. Um, as I say, uh, I'm happy to propose the amendment, Madam Mayor. If uh members disagree, and I completely understand the reasons for disagreeing, uh, so be it. But uh, at least I've had a go.
Councillor McDonald, please.
Um, pretty much agree with everybody. Thirty percent is just massive. Can we afford to do it? I also agree with the fact that um we do have to look at all our projects, all our budgets. And I would suggest that we put the brakes on nearly everything. Um, I would suggest also uh that our staff here, and having worked for several large organisations, our staff don't have jobs. They normally have three jobs, four jobs. So I think, I don't care what they cost, we're getting pretty good value out of them. Yeah. You know, I've worked in a lot of other organisations where there are people who are sitting around not doing much. You never see that of Setford Town Council staff. So I would suggest, and don't forget that those staff raises have come about by uh something outside of our control. It's not something that we decided to pay them a lot more money. So I think any organisation, the biggest part of the costs are staff. The options we have is to start thinning those staff out, and then we get less value out of the ones that are left. And the ones that are left are under strain because they'll have six jobs and they will leave. And that will leave us even more toothless than we are now. So my my plea is stay away from personnel.
Hmm.
Don't touch them. We've just got to put the brake on all our aspirations. And we do need to maintain that um that reserve. Don't forget, we are looking at a one-year budget. Who budgets for a year? You budget for four years, five years, ten years. And let's be honest, thirty percent increase. Has there been years in the past where we've had no increase in council tax?
That's the problem.
So.
That's the problem.
Look at ourselves. Some of it, we couldn't see this coming, but we made some of this.
Yeah.
So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McDonald. Councillor Harvey, please.
I've been having some major concerns about this ever since this just came up at finance. I was banging the hell on the wall, sleepless nights, writing things down and trying to find a way where we didn't have to put the precept up by thirty percent. Makes horrendous, it would push people into poverty, but we can't be doing that. I totally disagree with Roy. We have to supply, we supply toilets, we play parks. The part of the good thing is say, people getting money. We still have to keep the town moving forward. Okay? And Terry's come up with a good way of possibly saving our residents money on their precept. I'm as guilty as anyone in the past to voting for no, no percent pay rise uh increase in council tax. And I'm not ashamed of that. Okay, I was stood up for it and I said just the right thing to do at the time. In hindsight, as I, we had no idea what was coming. Okay? Possibly we should have known and we should have had possibly better financial advice and said, don't not put the precept up because the staff has got the increase, et cetera, et cetera. But we weren't to know what was coming. But one thing we cannot do is put this on our residents. We have to look up and protect them and I'll support our secretary's motion about the reserve thing.
Just a question.
Yep.
Uh, the question is quite simple. Uh, can somebody tell me in Panshaw and some pens, perhaps thirty percent on our? I keep trying to work out and I kept.
Was it a draw? So on a band D property, the currently um current council tax figure is a hundred and twenty-eight pound eighty-six for the year. With this current budget, the proposal would be an increase to a hundred and sixty-seven pound forty-nine, which is a twenty-nine point nine eight percent increase. So what's the difference? Sorry. Sorry. You've got the rearranged figures, haven't you?
This is the finance council. What happened is we had our final precept information twenty-second of of November. It was actually the day of the finance meeting. So I couldn't change anything. I subsequently can't change anything because the recommendation actually came, finance committee. So there is another schedule. So the actual increase was distributed to all the councillors um in a separate sheet of paper. It's about this twenty-seven point five four. And I'm not reducing it by a significant amount, but that's, that's, that's due to the uh SUV coming in. The average increase for a um on a band D is thirty-nine pound sixty-one per annum, three pounds thirty monthly and seventy sixteen. That would be the increase that we, uh, that's in the consolidated amount of that money.
That's on band D.
Band D.
It would be irresponsible of me not to highlight the issues in terms of the reserves. The council has an obligation to maintain its assets to achieve intergenerational equity. What that means to say is, we are only here for a short period of time. We are only custodians. We have a responsibility to next year's councillors. As councillor McDonald rightly said, the councillors in five years' time, the councillors in ten years' time. Sixty-five thousand is proposed as a contribution to building maintenance, which should be available to fund preventative maintenance in the budget. So it's not just uh and future years. And forty thousand has been set aside to refurbish and renew play parks. The amount available in reserves to finance major play park expenditure, which we have seen this year and are concerned that we will continue seeing, has been eroded. Going forward, there is, if there is insufficient monies to maintain play parks, you'll all be having a different con- conversation. Fifteen thousand pounds has been set aside of First St Peters, as again, the council will need to spend significant amounts going forward to keep the building safe. That's just marking time on an asset that we have failed to look after. Twelve and a half thousand has been set aside for office equipment, mainly computers, as these would be needed to be renewed on a systematic basis. Finally, five thousand pounds has been set aside to pay for elections. By contributing to reserves annually, this cost is spread over the council election cycle. I need to highlight to you that the estimated cost for elections next year is approximately twenty-five thousand, based on the information that the finance team received from Breckland Council. There's only sixteen thousand in the election cost reserve. So if we choose not to.
Where are we going to get the money?
So I'm mindful that I've got a proposal on the table, well, an amendment on the table, and a second for said amendment. We need to vote on the amendment. Sorry.
Could I just, could you just do the wording again?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Because I was listening a lot, right? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm happy to um uh send this through, uh, from scribbling it out, sorry. Um, but uh essentially, there's three points, which is to uh agree a ten percent increase in Fettford Town Council share of council tax, uh, which would mean a reduction in expenditure for the uh budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty. Uh, that would be made up by uh a more optimistic turn forecast in relation to vacant properties, saving sixteen thousand, six hundred per year in business rates and assuming an occupancy for six months. Uh, so additional income of eight thousand, three hundred. That leaves a hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven twenty needing to be found. The proposal is to transfer eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty to reserve instead of a hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred, on the proviso that the additional, uh, any further savings identified during the year be transferred to reserves, meaning if rates and utilities do not end up costing as much as feared. Thank you.
Superb. So we have that amendment to the motion on the table. We have a second. Those in favour of those amendments, please. Remind me, is this a customary recorded vote?
Because it's the budget.
Because it's the budget. It is. So yes, this is a recorded vote. It happens regardless of it being called because it is the budget. Against. You have one abstention. Rejected. So that amendment was rejected. We can now move to the substantive. Unless anybody wants to put in an amendment. Councillor Brain.
Having heard the numbers of what either twenty-seven point five or thirty percent is, um, coming down to seventy-five percent three, which is band D only, or band D and above in this town. I believe it's sixty-eight percent of the houses are lower than band D. Might be slightly more than that, I'm not sure. It it changes and all the time. And because some of the new houses that are built also don't get up in a band D, but it's a bag, so it's sixty-eight percent. I would look at a smaller reduction in what we're going to put in reserves and look at an increase on the precept of eighteen percent. It's one of those things, no, we don't like it. We have thought on this council for year on year and done lots of no increases. Um, and um, this is actually saying, um, somebody should have told us. Um, we were told and told and told that whenever it's a no percent increase, it's actually a four point five percent reduction. Um, and it's always been that, um, ever since day one. But people wanted to go for this. We don't put it up. Now you know what happens if you don't put it up. And we need to have an increase. And one of the things that I I would look at severely is, I the pound for the toilets, certainly not ours, let's go back to Norfolk and ask them to throw some money in. Even let's get them to throw some money in the pot and we pay some of them. Um, you know, that, as Terry said, you know, we got fifty thousand for our ten thousand input. That was great. But that will come out of Norfolk's increasing budget next year. Um, and you know, it's why council taxes are flipping high, because nobody looks at it enough. We have on here that we're going to renew play parks this year, or play park equipment. Now, guess what? If you looked at having half as many play parks with equipment in, still got space. The kids hardly use the equipment. The mums tag them up there. We've got the big one at Castle Park. We've got a big one on the end of the town. Let's look at being more organised and the kids have the green spaces, they play. Let's organise things to do on them places that don't have to have this massive equipment spent. Now, you could save another, if we took ten thousand pounds out of it and had one less play park, equipped play park, we could save some money. These are the sort of projects that we need to look at because there's no flipping money anymore. You know, it's great when everything was really good and you could ask these people to pay it and they would. We didn't ask them to pay it. Now we've got to bite the bullet and say, I'm sorry, but you're going to have slightly less amenities. You're going to have to have an increase, or forty percent of you are going to have to have an increase in your council tax. You know? Some of us, that's going to be an awful lot more than what we're talking about. But you've got to be fair and it's got to be found. And we've got to look after the people's pocket as much as we can. Um, and that's not like just doing projects and certainly not next year's people. You know, if you've got no reserves for maintenance of your properties, we're going to be in a right dipping mess. You know, and that's not we signed up for. We didn't sign up to not have the town as good as it is.
I'll take councillor Tullet and then councillor Barretto, please. Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of households all over the country that are looking at their budgets. And what they need to do is say, what we cut that is not an essential. Sky TV, um, trips out, fast food. And I think the, but the council have got to do the same thing. You know, we might have to tighten our belts for a few years, but it could be a case of going back to the committees and saying, look at what is essential, you know, do we really need this? Can we do without this? And, you know, it could improve in a couple of years' time, but cutting the reserves is really quite a dangerous situation for buildings to maintain. Um, you need those reserves. So really, can, is there anywhere in the budget that can be cut? It might not be um very popular, but you know, it could be staff redundancies, you know? If that is the sort of thing you're looking at when you're you're cutting council tax. Um, it's it's not something that, you know, we'd like to do, as as Mac says. You know, the 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 teamwork very well. And if you cut the staff, then, you know, it puts pressure on other staff and causes stress. But, you know, perhaps we need to look at where we can make cuts.
Thank you. Councillor Barretto, please. And I'll take councillor Dowling and then councillor Crawford.
Madam Mayor, a couple of points. Um. Once the first amendment has been rejected, I thought I may come up with an alternative, a bit of a compromise. And why not, right? Once we are, might as well try. Um, it's a spend D and the difference per month will be about thirty some pounds, I think. I've mentioned, what was the exact amount?
Three pounds thirty per month.
Three pounds thirty, but it overall for the year was about thirty quid, something like that.
Thirty-nine pound sixty-one.
It's not a massive amount, but let's just say that we go with twenty percent on that. My opinion is that the reserves are there for any day. Bloody hell, it's been pouring outside in the past couple of months, a couple of years actually, but you know, it is, it is for, it is for emergencies. And I think it makes sense to to keep those because obviously, should something happen, we don't all have the ability of foresight. In the same way, we didn't foresee just how difficult things were going to get when we decided that we weren't going to increase the preset on previous years and previous occasions. Might have included that situation. Um, we we thought we were doing the best for the people we represent. But obviously, you know, given inflation, given Covid, if everything happened afterwards, clearly not always we can guess what comes ahead in the next two or three years. So we might not be here next two or three years. Some of us might be councils, some of us might not. So we have to think about ourselves. And now they're going to look inside and what amount of money or budget they have to work with from the decisions we take today. So in order for com- for the sake of compromising, what about if we tried to make more or softer way? We increase it by twenty percent, which is still reasonable. Refuse the reserves, which means maintaining the same amount of reserves as we did in previous years, rather than increasing the reserves. But still maintaining that those pot of reserves in there. And I think the ideas of starting to create new innovative ideas to increase the income of the assets we have at the moment, like councillor Jenny mentioned, is an important one. This is not only about how we're going to increase the amount, about who is saving, but about how can we just go and increase the amount of money we collect from the things we already have. So the channels, for example, perhaps try for the remaining of the year for twelve periods of rents, trying to increase other groups of micro businesses, take on the premises for contracts of six months as a trial, as an experimental lease, so they're not tied to the situation. But during those six months, something comes better than nothing. In that, I agree with Terry. We need to start to be more creative about how we go about the things we have and how we can cash in. If that means offer the rent for four or five months or six months as a trial period for some micro businesses, if he helps them for six months and if he helps us with after the money, if he helps us not having to pay the taxes on it, you know, the rates on it, which then in itself is a big saving, why not? So my proposal is twenty percent, keep the reserves as they are and rethink the strategy, our business plan when it comes to the rental spaces we have. Thank you.
Councillor Barretto, can I have some clarification on your point that you made regarding the reserves? So are you saying that keep the proposed contributions to reserves as they are?
I'm saying the same amount as in previously, as the previous year.
The previous year. So you would like for us to only put ninety four thousand into reserves, negating the fact that there's only sixteen thousand in the election reserve cost? And this council has already been told that there's a nine thousand pound shortfall in there. So we're happy, basically, to be in debt to Breckland on that one. There's and no contribution to the playpark renewal reserve when we have spent considerable amount of money in there and will probably continue to need to do so. Just so I'm clear, and this council is clear.
What I mean by maintain the amounts is maintain the amounts to break it even with what we need to cover, has been decided by the committees. I don't want to go against the committees because a lot of hard work has gone into it to decide what we need for that term. So we will put whatever minimums we require into it, whereas the playparks and the election money obviously has to come from somewhere, and coming from the trees, I know that much. So we will cover those. And then if ten percent is not acceptable for the rest of the committee years, for the rest of the council, let's increase it by twenty percent. I'm just trying to be reasonable, find a half term rather than the whole thirty odd percent, which is a big leap to ask for our taxpayers, going from zero to thirty percent in one single year of increase. I think, and then that was the point of the playparks, let's cut them one or two of the playparks. God, you know, that happens in my world, red, square, to roll. I mean, if you're going to pack playparks, I just hope it's not in our world. If you're going to take people with the facilities.
Thank you, councillor Barretto.
If you're going to take away the facilities they have for the amount of money they pay, they are not going to be happy. I would like to finish. Thank you.
Councillor Dowling, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to point out that though it doesn't seem very much in monetary terms over a year, thirty odd pounds, that's a lot at this time when people are struggling to get enough of their heating bills and how to cook and that sort of thing. And I do think we should do all that we can to reduce that amount. And I understand that, you know, we need a certain amount in reserves and obviously a lot of things people don't want to cut. But I'd like to take Roy up on his point about the playparks not being used. I mean, I live near Castle Park and there are children on there all the time on the equipment, all times of the day.
I didn't say Castle Park, I said, we've got seven. We don't need seven in a town this size.
We've got eleven.
Eleven.
Right, well, I mean, I'm sure everyone in those areas would say the same, that if they're used and then they, you know, I don't think you can cut things for young children. I don't think that would make us very popular as a council. But I do think, I agree with councillor Barretta, that maybe we need to perhaps think about keeping the amount they pay a bit higher than ten thousand or whatever. But, you know, I think perhaps twenty percent is a bit much, but.
What's required people to think?
Just very quickly, I haven't got any ideas, I'm not good at finance, I'm not committed to that idea. But I'm just saying I would not be supporting anything that cuts our staffing ratio because we've only just got up to it and the pressure's come off on the little bit. So I would not support anything that cuts staffing.
Thank you. Councillor Hollis, please.
We've all got to pull our belts in, as I say, because of climate and that. Is there any chance that, I think we've done it in past, that these budgets have gone back to the committee budgets have gone back? Or are we a cutthroat era that we've got to decide today?
We do not have to decide today. We need to make the decision and inform Breckland council of what we set the precept at, which obviously the budget has a huge effect on, as we have heard from the discussions. That needs to be done by the end of January. So it can go back to committees if that is what this council wishes, and that seems to be the feeling right now.
Can I just ask, the thirty pound something, was it thirty or pounds a year? That's for a band D.
Band D.
So obviously band A, which.
Should be less.
Many of our residents now, I can't see many, because Roy said there's not that many D. So as a band A, that will work out to.
Forty six pounds, forty.
Twenty six pounds a year. And that's a thirty percent.
Thirty seven point six.
And that's what, that's what this is about, yeah?
Okay. Councillor Cannon, please.
Thank you. Could I propose it does go back to committees? The reason I'm saying it is, I don't know about anybody in the room, but I know Jenny does it, I do it, and I expect Dennis does it. We look at what we've got in our houses. What can we afford to do now and what we can't afford to do? And that is the way that we was brought up to live. And the council should be doing the same thing. Okay, yeah, the playparks need doing. Is it urgent? Can it wait a year? You know, and I'm not just picking on playparks, anything in the council that can wait. Obviously, anything that's got to be done, has got to be done and we've got to pay for it. But, you know, if there's schemes within there that can wait a year, take them out. Because that's what you would do if you was running your own home. I need a new three piece suite, oh, don't get this year right away, you know? Not so hard to get a new three piece suite, but do you know what I mean? You wait until you can afford it. And I think at the moment we're at that stage where we can't keep taking out reserves. This is what's been going on. No. A couple of years ago, we wanted zero. I said, I don't believe in going in at zero because this is what was done to me years ago, when they said, oh, we're going to freeze your rent for five years. And after five years, bang, that was it, huge increase. We couldn't take that as tenants, we couldn't take that. But we are going to do the same thing if we don't keep a hold and keep putting into our reserves. And I don't know where I read somewhere, but I read that the district councils are allowed to charge up to six thousand, one hundred now, where it used to be five thousand for elections. I can't remember, I'll have to try and find out, yeah. But.
Done on a cost recovery basis.
Pardon?
It's a cost recovery basis. So there's two suggestions of the way forward. Councillor Hollis again. I've got two suggestions on the table, I'm just waiting for someone to pick up something.
They've rappers. I wouldn't like to see the tallyed debts of Breckland council for elections.
So there's two suggestions on the table, councillors. Both have been muted, both have been proposed, nobody seconded. Councillor Bray, please.
Madam Mayor, I would second that we send this all back to the committees and then we come back. Whether we have a special meeting, a one agenda item.
It'll have to be two.
Well, let's go back to the committees, see what they come up with, and then we can take it from there. And, you know, as I say, I'm just looking at the bits and pieces here, you know, we're talking about, it's a choice between food or heating. And we're going to spend eighteen and a half grand on putting flowers in King Street. Sorry, this might be the one year where we paint some paper. Why are we spending perhaps about twenty grand? I hate to say, perhaps we should look at here. It's costing us ten grand a year to have ten meetings.
You've seconded a motion.
I've seconded a motion and that needs to go back to the committee.
I'm just mindful that. Apologies, I'm starting to get tired, so I dread to think how it's getting for you guys. We've had a proposal, we've had a seconder, I'd like to put that to the vote because I think we need a clear way forward. So the proposal is that this goes back to committees. All those in favour?
What's the instruction to the, so is there a percentage?
Your budgets.
I think we need to take that as a separate issue, depending on the outcome of this. So all those in favour of it going back to committees, please? All those against? Six, six. It's a tie. No pressure.
Now you know where you get the big bucks.
All of the two pound coin that Terry found sitting next to a car one day, great. I abstained on the first vote and I think it would be inappropriate to then pass a casting vote when I haven't actually cast a vote. We need resolution and we need a way forward.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask if Dan went with a chance to ask if somebody can second my proposal, because we've never been around that.
I opened the floor, I said, I had.
Moved on from.
I had two, I had two proposals, I had a seconder. Sorry, apologies. So in that case, if we've got a proposal from councillor Barretto, could you rework, repeat that proposal? Well done.
All right.
I see there's two proposals on the table.
My apologies, Madam Mayor, for the sake of clarity, they say there's a tie on the previous vote. Are we allowed to vote on it? As much as I'd like to put my proposal forward, I have to be fair to everybody.
We can go to the substantial if you want.
You know what? Why don't we just put it to the vote, why don't they go to substantial? Because I do not want to push through an amendment and then not be fair, there hasn't been voted.
You can't. In amendments.
It's been overlooked, I'm just being asked about it, so I'm saying, I don't want to step on.
I'm going to go to the substantive motion because I think that will clear the way and then whatever happens out of that will inform further discussion. Is that appropriate, Town Clerk?
That's what you're proposing and you get seconded?
Well, there is the review of the operational budget. Do I have a proposer to approve the operational budget?
As written in the papers.
As written in the papers, as presented. Is there a proposer?
Yeah, okay.
Is there a seconder? Thank you, Jim. All those in favour?
Two, three.
All those against?
Sorry, five. Two, three, four, six. So that's failed.
Okay. We don't have a budget at the moment. The only way now forward is for it to go back to committees.
You've still got a vote on that?
We voted on.
There must be an amendment.
But we voted.
Somebody come up with a suggestion because otherwise we are here all night and I'm good for that.
Madam Mayor, I did suggest an amendment.
So if you repeat.
Go back to basics if that's been denied, so perhaps the amendment will go through and if not, we'll go back to committees.
Could you repeat the wording of your proposal, please?
An increase of twenty percent rather than going all the way to the, what's that thing?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, close to thirty, which is a big leap. And just put into, put into the election pot whatever is necessary for election, election pot, because that needs to be done. Cover, maintain the reserves, well, remember what I said, we maintain the reserves to same level as we were before, as long as we put enough just to top it up, whatever is required for the playparks and for the election pot. And the rest, we're going to have to find alternatives and to increase the income from the lettings and the assets we have.
I know, I think we need to just.
We can question numbers also, because if this proposal is carried, this council then needs to decide how that's done.
Okay?
Well, can I just ask, have you quickly got your calculator to work out how much the transfer to reserves would need to run to in order to achieve twenty percent? Question numbers. Because that might help.
Or does that actually require a full reworking? And if so, that can't happen at this meeting?
Twenty percent increase with higher sixty five thousand pound reduction in expenditure, sixty five thousand. So that would be, if you took that to, so that's seventy thousand pounds approximately. I mean, it takes up very good, between sixty and seventy thousand pounds to be there to reserve to fund elections and anything else that we.
So. Which reserve proposed budget are you going to? And can we make that decision in here, given that those are delegated?
I think you'll find that because you're voting on the whole budget, it's a full council decision. So even if they decided in committee, they'd have to bring it back to full council.
Okay. So. No, because the amendment isn't complete yet. I'm trying to work a way through so that we get a resolution on this. So there's.
That's why I proposed the amendment, I was trying to find a compromise to at the table, so we get this sorted today rather than go back into committees and go in circles because sooner or later it's going to have to be dealt with.
What I'm saying is, is my understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, so the increase of twenty percent would mean a sixty five thousand pound reduction in expenditure. Are you proposing that comes out the operational or within the contributions to reserves? If I understood you correctly, it was a reduction from the contribution to reserves. Yep.
You needed, yeah.
So, so therefore, what part of that are you adjusting? You've said maintaining the election pot reserves. Are you just going to take, are you proposing that we just take out the full sixty five from the property repairs? Nice, easy round number, done.
Not necessarily. I think that there might need to be divided by saves in different, across different parts, can be often one part.
And I think it needs the specifics in there, you can't just say you're going to reduce that because, you know, one count, one office will go back saying, well, no, we're having all of that. And another committee will go back saying, no, we're having all of that. And it isn't clear. It needs to be clear and explicit so that officers and committees know what they're doing. Town Clerk.
Could I make a suggestion that would split this decision? So you agree to the twenty percent and the amounts? And then the second decision is the, God, it's too late in the day, portioning, what am I talking about?
I have no idea.
A portioning of the amounts to the reserves. So you agree to the actual amount that you're going to reduce and then you agree to how you can proportion, I can't say that word, anyway, how are you going to split what's left?
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
But it kind of needs to be all tied up in the same motion.
Well, it can be.
So that goes back to the committees to do.
You voted against this.
Yeah. The only people that can decide how that is proportioned is the committees.
That's what we said, we said take it all back.
You have to, again.
May I just ask for clarification, Alan? Does that sixty five you're talking about, the reduction, take into account Terry's idea of the improved letting situation?
It wouldn't, you would reduce that sixty five if you had, if you're quite optimistic. It would actually increase, you know, you reduce expenditure, increase income. It would actually increase, you know, you reduce expenditure, increase income.
Yeah, so the idea of the more optimistic outlook which Terry proposed earlier. If that was added to this, we wouldn't have the 65 reduction for the reserves needed.
I think you, you would need a reduction in reserves.
Well, that's exactly the answer.
So would it be a suspension? That's why I mentioned the leases.
Yes, Alan.
Just by pointing to the Finance Committee, all the expedients of the reserve contributions. So possibly as a way forward, Finance Committee can go back and maybe look at the reserve contributions and then come back and then possible back forward. So none of the other committees have actually made any decisions regarding the reserve contributions. It's only the Finance Committee.
Town Clerk, I think if you were going to support that, you would invite chairs of all the committees to attend that finance meeting so that they could all be present for that discussion.
Great idea, I'll say it.
You two committees.
You know, I wasn't here all night, we've got to agree to something.
I'm asking for your steer, councillor, I'm only here to facilitate. Yes, please, councillor Germaine.
To, to summarise, the amendment proposed by councillor Beretta and seconded by councillor Wright is for a 20% council tax increase and the knock-on effect of needing to find additional money being met from reductions in contributions to reserves. The exact nature of which will be determined by the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
I'm not very for it, but I'm just.
It was used to. Are you happy with that wording? And you are happy to propose that wording?
Yes, that's fine.
You're still happy to second that wording? All those in favour, please?
Sorry, but could we just ask you to repeat the wording, please?
Joking.
I'm genuinely sorry, you turned away from me, I'm deaf.
Essentially, it's a 20% increase in council tax. The knock-on impact is a reduction in contributions to reserves. And what exactly those reductions are in reserve movements will be determined by the Finance Committee. That's essentially what's been proposed.
Can we vote on the precept before we actually vote on the budget? So we need that translated into the budget. Do, do we need that? I'm, I'm asking a genuine question. Exactly, so do we need that translated into the budget?
Okay, that's Finance Committee, Finance Committee, we propose a budget to full council and then the precept would be approved thereafter.
Okay. Is everybody as clear as mud on the way forward?
Yes, it's going back to finance, you're going to sort it.
And then bring it back to us to agree or disagree.
Finance, then it comes back here in January.
All those in favour of the proposal, which has been seconded?
Which prefer, I'm sorry.
20% and then.
20%.
And the reduction to.
And then we bring the, we will need to then bring back the budget. So the steer is from this council to reduce that to 20%, then 30% and those implications. It needs, ultimately, the proposal is for it to go back to the Finance Committee with that objective in mind. Reduction of 20%. That's the wording that we need because that's the action that needs to happen, isn't it?
Yep.
The proposal is that this is sent back to finance with the instruction for finance to have, to come up with the figures for a 20% increase in the precept and to proportion the savings in the reserves.
By the reserves.
You, you can't possibly vote for a 20% increase in a precept with no budget.
No, exactly.
So it's not, it can't be a 20% increase in the budget. It's got to be, we're sending it back to finance to facilitate a 20% precept and the ramifications thereof being back to this committee, to this council.
That is my understanding.
Yeah. I would, I would propose that's what we do. Well, you take, we propose and second it, we're just waiting.
The problem is, is we need to be explicit on what we're actually doing.
It can't, it can't be, we're voting for it.
So you're not voting on the precept, you're voting on the budget and that it's going to go to finance for them to produce the figures for a 20% increase. And then that will come back to vote on the budget. And after we've voted in the budget, you can vote on the precept if you agree to the budget increases.
I'm just, I'm really sorry, I've been, I had to go around in circles. I'm just confused, I mean, are three of us on Finance Committee side this?
No, because it comes back to.
I know it's got to come back.
Come, that's for council, yeah.
We'll be discussing it.
No, do you want it to go back to the committees? So they're now delegating that responsibility to the Finance Committee. So. I'll ask one last time. We have the proposal, we have the, it's seconded. All those in favour?
Three, four, five, six, seven.
Against?
Four.
Motion carried.
Abstaining.
Oh, sorry, apologies and one abstention.
You twisted her edge, you don't know what you're doing.
I'm really sorry, but it needed a clear direction of travel and that was not coming forward. Okay, so the next agenda item, confirmation of the precept, we cannot do. That's the right. So confirmation of the precept, we cannot do because we haven't done the budget. So with your permission, we will defer that till another day in hell. So 515, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required.
No.
Open to suggestions?
None.
None, excellent. 516, committee officers update, anything?
The only thing I've got to update on is the Guild Hall and how we're getting on with the Guild Hall. So as you know, we're trying to get the emergency works done. And because of the actual building being, listed building, it's been, and a complex building, it's been quite challenging. However, mainly due to the weight loading of the tower and how the restoration work could be completed after the propping. And this influences the design of the scaffolding. So we've had to get the architects in and the surveyors in and we've had more than one person. So the majority consensus in agreement with the HBO is that we're going to have to remove the tower from the roof and repair it in a workshop as this alleviates several issues with safety. And restoring in situ will mean a much higher quality of restoration. What's got to be determined is, because they're going to take it in sections. So we've got to remove the clockworkings first, take those out so they can get up into the tower. And it may well be that they take the cap off, then they take the struts and then they look how structurally competent the actual clock faces. They don't know how far they've got to take it down, but it will be taken off in layers and then worked on. Hopefully, the very, the, the bottom bit with the lead flashing will remain in situ because from what we can see, that's not too bad. And then that will be covered and it will be taken away. However, the scaffold design is being completed for that now and the cost will be confirmed pending on the design. And there'll also be higher costs as well. The Venetian window is deteriorating rapidly, so that's been taken down next week. So that's been taken down, it'll be dried out and stored for us. And the cost for that and the scaffolding for that and the temporary roofing for the Venetian window are 4,500. Obviously, I'm going to try and include the work on the Guild Hall in the next heritage bid. But, because it will take probably a couple of years to restore. So fingers crossed it's only towards that, but obviously that's not guaranteed. But I will do my best.
Please.
Has work been voided if it had been regularly maintained? Or was it just something that was just wear and tear that would have happened eventually?
I would not choose to comment on that because I'm not a surveyor or an architect.
Nicely taken, the fifth, any further questions on that one? So we move on to 51722, which is the exclusion of press and public to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Body's Permission to Meetings Act 1960. Press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. All those in favour?
Well, they all got bored and went anyway.
Don't blame them. Thank you. Confirmed the recording's off.